Going to call the work session. We're going to call the work session to order and we are doing a work session this evening. Regarding quasi judicial training for the council and some boards that we have joining us this evening. Nina, please take it away.
Hello, everyone. I like to do this reminder at least every once or two years. I think it's important. A lot of quasi judicial matters go in front of you and instead of you just. Hearing one of us on the side being like, it's QJ quasi judicial. Let's, let's go like, take a step back and talk about why that's important. So. In order to explain what quasi judicial is, I thought it was. The first thing I usually do is distinguish it from legislative. So whereas for the planning commission and the board of justice, most of what you do is quasi judicial. The city council, most of what you do is legislative. So you're, when you're amending the code, you're passing a resolution about broad application. Short term rental ordinance, I believe you might've spent a little bit of time on that. Any land use, you know, when you're rewriting the entire land use code, when you're amending any part of your code, it doesn't even have to do about zoning, that's legislative. So it's what you typically would think, especially for the newer council members, what you typically would think or is part of your council role. Sometimes as a local body, you're also acting as a judicial. So I sometimes joke quasi judicial is kind of like, kind of judicial, but you are sitting as the judge. You're, it's, that is not the point time for you to, um, to go back to your legislative role. It's the time where someone's in front of you, they have a specific property. Um, or a specific license, like a liquor license, and they're in front of you and they're asking you to apply the code that you already adopted legislatively. So you are truly acting like a judge, it's narrow application. So, um, you're applying existing, the existing law, just specific set of facts. If, for example, um, a couple of years ago, something, something came up in front of you all that. About, um, uh, mobile homes. And it was like, oh, I wish that the code didn't say that, but it, it did say it, it was not the best written. You need to apply what the code says to that property because that property owner has purchased that property with what the code says at the, at the time. Versus you deciding like, wait, actually, we really shouldn't have done this. The time is to like, okay, close the hearing and then, then you could always work on changing your code legislatively in the future. So examples of quasi judicial or specific land use approvals, historic preservation decisions as it relates to one property. Any liquor license hearings that come in front of you, that's important too, to just keep that decorum that you are. The judge in that case and you're applying the state statute and the city code to that particular licensee or applicant in front of you. I thought this is helpful, just to be very, very specific to, um, woodland park. Again, land use decisions, historic preservation, nuisance abatement. Most appeals, um, as it relates to a specific property or business, you haven't had one in a long time, but your code does allow for certain appeals to go in, in front of you. Liquor license, business license, revocation or suspension hearings, that's important because we wrote our, um, short term rental ordinance title five. Well, you adopted it, um, to be, to have, uh, have the right for revocation, suspension hearing. And I remember when we were talking about that code a couple of months ago, um, some of the council members were, um, concerned, how can we just revoke someone's hearing? I said, no, well, you have to follow that, the proper due process. So it is, it relates to one specific property. But why is it so important? I go back and forth with starting with this or, or doing it right after we explain what it is. So it really goes back to constitutional due process, which obviously is the, um, most important law in our land. And to put, that, that's why. It gives staff members and even your attorney some angst when we try to point out that things are quasi judicial. We're just trying to make sure the procedure is fair, that everyone has due process. That is a right that's afforded to them in the constitution. State constitution and then down to, um, the application here because you're affecting someone's property rights. So. You're not depriving some of their property, but you're affecting some of their property and you, you can't do that without due process of law. So due process is fairness. It's also important so everyone has an interest in the case can watch. So whether it be the applicant, they hear how you're making decisions because again, you're acting as a judge. Or it could be just a community, a community member who's concerned, who has standing to be interested, that they understand why you made that decision. They can understand, okay, the applicant presented, I'm reading the packet, I'm hearing what the council's saying. It's, there's not side conversations or behind the scenes. So it's important to ensure opportunity for fair hearing before an unbiased decision maker. So that's you, even though it's a small community, I represent all small communities and this is probably the hardest thing because you care so much, but. You, you, you do also need to care to be fair and unbiased. And look at things objectively, even though you're likely going to know most of the people that come in front of you for these type of things. I forgot to say at the beginning, please ask questions as I'm going, that would, I think that would help everybody and including everyone who's here. So the final decision, your final decision on a quasi judicial matter can be appealed to district court. So that's also a role of mine as a city attorney is to make sure that. Everything is as fair as, as it poss, as it possibly can be, so that when everything is wrapped up to the judge. They're looking at, at, that at least you followed a fair process. Your decisions are given deference from the courts. You're, they're not going to be overturned by a court unless you're what they call arbitrary and capricious. So it's, it's not, um, you do have latitude, you don't, it's, it's just that it needs to be objective and we'll go, we'll go into how it needs to be, but. When the court is looking at that appeal, they're going to look at everything in the record and that's going to be everything that's in the hearing, everything in the packet. Again, that goes back to, that should be easy to button up and send off to the court, not get, um, try to, to get, you know, again, side conversations or side correspondence. Everything should be all together. So there are three ways that a quasi judicial hearing can be, can be impartial. So we want to, I mean, can be partial. We want us to be impartial, right? So if I could break into three different categories of what we don't want to see for a quasi judicial, this is how I'd break it apart. So ex parte communication is when someone talks to you outside the hearing. So that could be applicant and, and, or the developer and say, listen, you're in council and this is good business. I really want you to, you know, vote yes for my. Matter, that's not appropriate because they need to talk to you in front of everybody. I put a neighbor comes up to a Jonies to say that they have a concern with a certain development application. When this happens, especially if it's just a neighbor, I would say, listen, I want to make sure that your voice is heard. I want to make sure your. Concerns are on the record and they're considered. Please email. You know, I, I think it's a city clerk to, for the, for the public comment. Or come that day and you can even say, we have zoom, we have, and, and that's the way you could say it, not like, oh no, my, my lawyer told me not to speak to you. It's more, I want to make sure that you're heard. I need to make sure I share this with everybody. So won't you please, you know, write an email, come in person. I want everyone to hear what you have to say. That's how I would deal with it if I were you. Another way you could be partial or not impartial is prejudgment or bias. So a lot of times. We try to, we can't always anticipate, but we try to, if something is going to be quasi judicial or even a certain type of applicant is going to be in front of you. We want to make sure that you're not, um, seen as advocating like, I will never vote for anything, I will never prove anything from that applicant. That would not be fair because you're not coming to. They're coming in front of you and they have the right, no matter who they are, that you are going to fairly look at their decision. Doesn't mean that you're going to prove it. It means you're going to fairly look at the code factors, you're going to apply the code factors objectively. So an example I steal a time is when people say, I'm, I'm never going to go for any affordable housing. I never want any affordable housing. Well, if somebody comes in front of you that has affordable housing. You know, that applicant or the community might say, well, you already made your mind up. You already expressed in writing on the internet that you'll never vote for anything affordable housing. How could you come to the hearing as an unbiased decision maker? And then conflict of interest in woodland park, this is very specific in your charter. It's defined and the process is defined. But in a most, you know, best example is that your spouse owns a restaurant that's seeking the license before you. What should you do? You might ask. How do you cure? So there's two ways. If one of, so if one of those three things have happened. You're going to either recuse or disclose on the record. So I would say a good, a disclose on the record might be. Maybe the applicant spoke to you, but you said, you know, no, I can't do this. Or sometimes people just want to go over the top and say, um, not over top, but they want to cover their bases and, and, and have the perception of, you know, everything that's. Perception and that everything is being fair. You know, this is. This is how I know this person, but I feel like I could be fair. Where you should recuse yourself is when you've, um, have a direct conflict of interest. Or where you can't be unbiased and only you know. So I'm going to go through this more, but I say, when I doubt, ask your city attorneys, I've had phone conversations with. Um, a handful of people in this room, both planning commission, board of adjustment and some council members. It's good to talk it through. And I'm, I, I would recommend doing that. I'm never going to tell you what to do, but I'm going to ask you these questions. So, because I, no one else can go into your brain, right? Especially as to pre bias. We can't, we don't know how you're feeling if you could be fair, but you could ask yourself these questions. I've even had council members say, well, can you ask me these questions in public at the beginning of the hearing? Of course, that's what we're here for. So then you can, um, clear it for yourself and for everyone in the public. So, you know, is your ability to decide the fair, um, decide the case fairly and partially and based solely on evidence affected? And you might say, no, I am, even though, um, the applicant is my son's baseball coach, um, I am going to look at the, you know, apply the law. I'm going to be fair. That's what I'm here for. I understand the importance. Does an actual legal conflict exist? That's where I will talk that through with you. It's good to talk beforehand and then we'll talk in public, do both, um, perceived conflict. I'll have to say it, it is good. The phone calls I get, like I would say 80% of the times, there is not a conflict, but it's because you care. It's good to talk through. It's a small community though, so just because you know somebody, it's not a conflict, but we'll go through that. It's like, yes, you, you know, the person, but. You're not financially benefiting from their business, right? And you could still be fair and impartial, right? Do you feel like you have to? You know, approve the application just because you might know that person from your church or something? Or from your, you know, again, your kids or your grandkids, little league team, that we'll go through that. Because I would say, like I said, if everybody recuses themselves just because they knew someone in a small town. That was not fair to the applicant either. So will, will we go through that, that balancing? Does that make sense? Any questions or input? We're here for you for these kinds of things. Because again, we want to preserve the process. Oops, wrong way. So more suggestions. Use the code. You have a good staff, the planning staff, or let's say most of these things will be land use applications. Use, what, what they, everything that they include is, is important, but I would say when you're ready to make the decision, the factors, just the fact that they're restating the code factors. Whether it be factors or criteria, those are the criteria that you need to look, that your lens must, should, should be, that you're, you're looking at, do I prove this? In, by looking at, are, are these criteria met? That's how you're looking at it, not whether you like the person, personal opinion, subjective feelings, oh, they're going to build, they're going to paint the, the building purple. You know, that's, that's, that would be inappropriate, but you're going to be objective. So it's more like just being fair and objective. Look at your code. Again, the staff report will say, and these are the four criteria. That's what's most important. Base your decisions on facts, law, evidence. Not. And some of this is hard, but not like, if there's a hundred people screaming at you. That's in, in and of itself is not enough. And I know that's hard for me to say, not living in woodland park and you're represented by woodland park. But what's, it, what it, that person deserves a fair, the applicant deserves a fair hearing. So whether it be any, you would want the same for yourself or your neighbor. So. That just means, again, it doesn't mean approving everybody. That's not. It's that you're being objective, that you're looking at objectively and that the public comment's important, but you're taking the public comment to consider. As it relates to the code factors. So, um, that's, that's good to, uh, to do. And then I raised, kind of spoke about the record that goes to the court if this is appealed. But the public hearing is the record. So any audio. And that's what, that's what's, what's properly considered, what's in the record, not looking outside the record. I've had that question in woodland park recently. So what, what's in front of you is important, not to do your outside research. And what I, I always use this, this saying, think out loud, when you have your deliberations. I think it's important, it also makes the public feel like they're heard as well to. You know, instead of just running to make a motion, spend three, you know, the extra three to five minutes. Saying, you know, I'm thinking, I'm leaning towards this way because I heard this, I read this in the record, I'm looking at these code criteria and I think. It should be approved, denied or approved with conditions. Think out loud, speak that, speak that out loud. Because again, everyone has the right to hear how you came to that decision because you're serving as a judge. You guys get paid the big bucks. This is just an article I wrote a very long time ago, but it, it's, it hasn't, it hasn't changed, just said in a different, different way. Um, I just included it because I gave you guys the PDF so you have. So this is, uh, I thought this is, uh, again, helpful about how to conduct public hearings. So what's important is that everyone feels that they're heard and fair. It doesn't, everyone is not going to, you're not going to make everyone happy. It's, the goal shouldn't be that. A certain result is achieved or that the majority of the people in the room. Are happy with the actual decision. It should be that they thought it was a fair process. So, and that they were heard and they, they were appreciated. So these are just some suggestions. You already do a lot of this. You announce the rules, especially if it's a bit, a lot of people, you want to maybe announce, remind people of the rules. Just because I find when people have the ground rules and they feel like it's, it's fair from the beginning. This is what the rules are from the beginning. This is how we're going to hear you. We have this three minute time limit. You'll see the little ticker on the screen. So you know how, how much to speak. Everyone's going to be given three minutes. It's not special treatment. And you guys do a good job of this, but. Just a reminder, the public testimony, especially in quasi judicial hearings, it's for them to make testimony, um, to be considered. It really isn't for a back and forth. And that's why I know it gets awkward, especially again, being a small town, but. It's, the, the point of it is that you take what they have to say and consider it or not consider it. But not to go, you know, back and forth is not really appropriate. If people do ask, like, let's say they all ask the same three, three questions. After that public comment, you could say, um, and I've seen you do it, you know, Karen, can you address the, the, the few questions that we had on this issue? Or, you know, you know, attorney, what's, what's the, what's the, um. What do you say about that legal issue? Or applicant, can you come up and address? You know, four people were wondering about this. Can you come up and address? That's the proper way to deal with it versus that back and forth. Because again, they're just giving testimony that's recorded into the record for you to make a decision. And, um, that's probably what, where I see the, the heart, that is the hardest with, um, you know, pub, public, obviously they don't. Maybe this is the first quasi judicial hearing they've been to ever in their life. So they're kind of like, well, why can't you talk back to me? And it's more like, well, this is, we want to make sure this is a fair process. We're the judge, we, we really appreciate your input. We'll see at the end of public comment, if any of the, you know, your questions, you know, the general questions could be addressed, that sort of thing.
Nina, there've been times though, when someone comes to speak during the public hearing for a quasi judicial issue. That I don't quite understand their point and I have asked in the past for them to click.
Oh yeah, definitely, definitely. It's more when they ask you questions than you answer and then, or they ask, well, what about the applicant? What, why are you, why are you doing this? Why aren't I building a taller tree? Or, or how do you, you know, that kind of thing? And I would say that you can still, um, and you, you, um, you have a very experienced, you know, mayor who's running these different hearings, but, um. And been at these different hearings, but it's kind of like, okay, we, we, you know, any concerns that we can get questions to. You brought, you brought up good, like good questions. We're going to ask staff at the end. Cause then it's, it's kind of like, does that clear process? But yeah, I think that's more than, more than fair. I don't want, it's like that, I don't want to be, you don't want to be too rigid saying, but that's, that's more inappropriate, I would say. Versus, um, like arguing or debating. None of you do that, but. I think it's good to give your witnesses full, the witnesses full attention. Again, think of it as, this might be the only time that these people ever see their council members, they'll ever come to a city meeting. So. It's good to give them your attention, not even, no matter what they're saying. Or what, what, what do you think of what they're saying? And then the applicant has the right to make a full presentation to present witnesses to respond after public comment closes. That is their right. They're the ones who have made the application. You're considering their application. So they have a right to give that full, um, presentation. So this is a public comment, uh, outline that you follow. So see after public comment, everything closes, everyone, that stops, then you could ask, well, does the applicant have a rebuttal? They usually like jump up and say if they do, and then city staff rebuttal sounds very legalistic. So it's more like response or clarification. Um, and then you could ask questions. Um, you could ask questions of anyone, even, even, um, technically you could ask someone, if someone brought up during, um. Public comment that you want to know more specific facts about. Or you, I see you should do it staff or maybe the planner or the engineer or like in the lawyer applicant. And then everything is closing, let's just say close public hearing, but, and then everything is closed and then that's when you deliberate, right? So you should ask all your questions at once and then talk amongst yourselves. Again, that thinking out loud. Cause right, so once you start deliberating. You've heard the applicant's presentation, you've heard the city staff's presentation, you've heard public comment, there's been questions, there's been rebut, like, uh, responses, there's been. Clarifications, you've asked, you've made sure to ask your questions. And then theoretically, most times you should have everything you need to make a fair decision, even if it's going to be a hard decision, but you have all your information. You have the packet that you read in advance, all the letters, the information, that sort of thing. And then you should make a motion and then we'll, we'll go over what that looks like. So, uh, this is another helpful. I know there's a lot of information, but again, this is like a resource that I find that I emailed to you guys, so you have it for the future. That's, that's, so that's why. Instead of me just having bullet points and taking notes, everything is here. So there's three things you could do, well, four, but you could approve, deny. Or approve with conditions. You could also continue, but I caution you that if you're continuing, it's because you're asking for specific information or. Or, um, documentation. That. Should go towards your decision. So in other words, it, it goes to the code criteria. It goes to something in the code that wasn't clarified. Not something extra that you're putting on or really just to delay because you're like, oh no, this is such a hard decision. And I, I, I do, I've been in a lot of, um, this is mostly what I do land use. I've been in so many tough. Hearings where it's of course easier for me just to be a lawyer. So I don't, I don't say that lightly. I do understand. But I've seen it sometimes, well, can we continue? And it's like, well, why? Cause I don't want, I, I also only, also don't want to keep the, um, increase the risk of. More people talking to you, right? In, in the middle of that, that's, that's, that's my thought. It's like, I don't want more residents to come and talk to you because you want, you want to be that fair. Objective decision maker deciding on everything in front of you. But not like you can't continue, but if you're going to continue, it's for a specific information that you feel is crucial for you to make that decision. Otherwise your decision is approved, deny or approve with conditions. And you must take some kind of action. The applicant has that right, even if it's that you're denying it, they have that right. Cause otherwise they're, all their work is in limbo. So you can't just like, okay, we don't want to even deal with this. You can't do that, especially for quasi judicial. So yeah, you can't refuse to make a motion. I say these things that I have seen, seen, seen where I have had to remind bodies, like, no, you do need to make a decision on that. And then amendments, I mean, we're, we're here for that, your city clerk and myself to, you're making the motion, but we are there to help with. Procedurally, is it stated right? Is it, is it clear? Does the clerk follow what is actually being voted on once you make that amendment? So, but the amendments must be germane, like, must be about. What's in front of you. So a lot of times it's added condition. And we'll go into like what acceptable conditions are, I think in the next slide, but, um, you sometimes someone might say, oh, I, I, I make a motion to approve. You have a second on that, you discuss, then someone wants to make an amendment, they could say, I make an amendment to, uh, to amend the motion. To add these two conditions. So it's important to have findings. So even this first bullet point is case law that says it must include evidence, proper grounds. So that goes to thinking out loud, deliberating just for a few minutes. Because otherwise people won't understand how you made that decision and then there's no basis for your decision. But again, your conclusions are based on evidence, decisions are based on code criteria. They're not based on personal preferences, opinions fit. If something is in front of you and you don't like the density, but the zoning district allows that density. It is not proper for that to be your only reason that you're voting against it. Because the code that already existed when that person bought the property, um, said that that was the density. The time is for you to look at, if you don't like a lot of density, then you, you know, revise your land use code. But that's the, where I see it having those density or, or architectural standards, you don't really have architectural standards for the most part in woodland park. So, um, even if you don't like. You know, you have height restrictions, but even if you don't like how something is presented to you or you would like, um. I don't know, the roof to be curved more than pointed, that's not appropriate if it's not in the code. I'm giving like more exaggerated, uh, examples to kind of, you know, explain the point. Oh, look, I said not. So that's typo, the applicant's in charge of application, not you. So in other words, I've seen this in another community, it happens all the time. I keep having to remind them. It, the, a rezoning was in front of them and they're like, well, I would like to vote to approve R2, not R3. But that's not in front of them. They had no authority to do that and I told them as much. But just because they think that this development or this, or that area should be an R2, they should have amended the zoning, um, map. You know, months, months ago. That was, in that community, I, I was given a lot of pushback, but I was like, no, you have to, you're voting for what is in front of you. You could deny if it's, if there's a, if the objective criteria are, are fit. And I think in that case they're like, well, I feel like there's no criteria, there's no basis to. There's no basis to approve, but there would be basis to, um, approve for R2, but that's not for you to, you could mention that, but, and maybe the person could withdraw the application, but. They have the right for you to say yes or no, what's in front of you. And then please do not conduct separate research. I dealt with this a couple of months ago from a prior council member. It just, it's, it's not appropriate because you need to, again, you're the judge, they're coming in front of you with evidence. And to do independent. Research on things that might not even apply to what you're, is in front of you is, is not appropriate. Cause again, that's not in the record. And also you are the judge in quasi judicial, you're not the advocate. And I know it's the hardest for the governing bodies, for the city council and the town council and the town boards. To, um, not understand that, but to kind of say, but I, I ran on these issues and I'm an advocate. But when you sit as a judge, again, the person has that property right for you to act as the judge. And not, um, do independent researchers. That doesn't mean you take, um, you can't read the newspaper because I was asked by that same person. That doesn't mean you can't read the newspaper, you know, things that are in the general domain. Or that you can't, you take away all the knowledge that you have about the community. That, that's not what that means. It just means, don't go down the rabbit hole and please don't submit the evidence that you've. Researched to the record because you're the judge. And why it, it, it's, it goes to that ex parte communication and also goes to the prejudgment, right? Cause if you're advocating for one position over the other, it doesn't seem like you have unbi, that you've come to an unbiased state. So failed motion means no decision was made. So we want to make it sure our decision is made. So if there's seven of you present and. Revote for the affirmative motion, let's say three of you vote for the, um, a motion to deny. And four of you vote no, one of those four who vote no should vote then again, should make a, a motion to approve or approve with conditions. Because again, that person has a right for an action to be made. But if something doesn't pass by a majority, an action has not been made. It hasn't been nothing. It's kind of like in limbo. Does that make sense? Any questions, Ryan? We have our excerpts in the planning commission because I use that all, do this all the time. So grounds for denial, again. Sometimes people, I say it a lot of times because some people say, oh, well, I need, does that mean I need to approve everything in front of you? Absolutely not. Again, you're just being objective. You're, you're applying the code. But what's appropriate versus what's not appropriate for you to deny? You could deny anything for any applicable portions of the code. So again, the staff wrote you these four criteria and you're like. None of these criteria meet or only one does. That's why I feel like it's appropriate to deny. Great. You're going to make that motion to deny. And then the applicant knows that they have to, um, resubmit with something different that does, um, apply to those criteria. What's inappropriate is if you ask a developer to volunteer a condition. So they can, they can volunteer a condition as long as lawful. Um, they could volunteer a condition. But let's say you ask them to, um, so sometimes people will say, well, well, Nina, can, can the applicant? Do that, or can we oppose out of the applicant? I said, well, does the applicant agree? Can, are they volunteering? Are they consenting to that? If they do, then you could add to a condition. But if they, if they say, no, I don't feel comfortable, I don't want that condition, you, that can't be the only reason why you vote to deny. That's not appropriate. And then just your, again, your personal belief about what should go in that property, like, um. I wish a Burger King was going up here instead of a Chick-fil-A. You know, that's not in the code. Make sense? So conditions were asked about, so again, we said we could approve, deny or approve with conditions. Many times your decisions are approving with conditions. Some of those conditions are laid out by the staff, recommended conditions, some you add on. I know the planning commission does that. Frequently they add on to things as long as, again, as long as they're appropriate and acceptable. Then you could add them. So anything that's enforcing the technical requirements, correcting a plat where it needs to be. Dedication requirements, preservation of trees, redirecting traffic. And look, I put conditions offered voluntarily by the applicant. So sometimes if, if something is a, a special use or conditional use and one of the factors is, you know, impact on the community. And you say, well, this, this use will not have an impact on the community as long as they shield that use. You could say, that's appropriate for me to approve with the condition that you install, you know. Five trees to screen the use from the adjacent property owner. That's an appropriate condition.
One that we face the most, I think. All the other zones have very specific.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you have a PUD next to a. A commercial zone. In the commercial zone is residences. PUD is wanting to put in a business. So we suggest that they have a condition of a fence. Which is like the condition of a residential zone against the commercial.
Right.
Even though that's not part of the requirement for PUD. It could go without the fence presumably. But, but we want to make that a condition of that PUD. Is that our purview to just go ahead and make that a condition or did they have to? Is that our purview to just go ahead and make that a condition or did they have to volunteer it?
I think Emily and Karen should jump in too. I think in most, in most cases, because of the way your. Code is, is written for the P U D, it's open enough or, or, um, broad enough. It, um, to do that. I would always just be safe ass first if they're volunteering, um. But what do you think, Karen?
I'm not an attorney, but ask to play one regularly. Um, so my background and training has been, uh, that's part of the point of the, the public hearing is sometimes there are issues and such that. Come up during that hearing, um, that weren't identified through the actual review process. Uh, so because, you know, the, the neighbors bring up, cause much more concerned about buffering or screening. Um, and feel that what was proposed isn't sufficient, so they're asking for that to be, you know, enhanced. Um, I, I do think, my opinion is that you do have that ability.
I think so too, yeah.
The, the level of, of what's.
Yes.
Asked for.
I think so, especially with the P U D, right? Because you're, um. It's not the same thing as a conditional permit with that, I know where you're going with the factors, but. They are asking for something unique, so it's like, uh. They have to get, give a little for that use too, right? Like a little give and take. And that would be different if you had, if you were like very particular about the design and that sort of thing, but I think it's more than appropriate, um. In, in that, in that case, just to, um, to add that condition about buffering. For the adjacent uses. So what's unacceptable is density restriction where the code, so let's say the code allows. Um, ten units an acre and you say, well, I'm gonna approve this. Application accepts the condition that it could only be eight units in the acre, that's not appropriate. Outside the applicable portion of the code, things that have no code basis, architectural review standards where none exist, um. I was in a community recently where, um. The building was like for a county building and they didn't like the way the facade was and. I said, but you guys don't have architectural review standards. Well, we should. Well, you don't right now, you can't, that would be inappropriate and I didn't like that. Um, but I don't, I kind of say it as is, I'm not, you know, so that would be the example. Technical requirements. I highly encourage you to trust your staff, I've seen other councils quite, when it's technical as to like for en- like engineering's. Like very technical, you would have no other way to, no, I can't, that doesn't mean you're not asking questions, right? Can you please explain this? But don't pretend to know, um, you know, like, oh, well. Would something, a larger drainage detention work when there's no study to, to show that? For those technical questions I would ask before the hearing, because then the staff can come prepared. And, and you're still going to let everybody know, but at least have them look up exactly what you mean, or you've heard a question about this or that, um. Obviously you haven't been having too many expert communications, but you see the emails coming through, so you wanna, um, it, it is a good idea to ask before the hearing. You're still being open, transparent, the staff member is still gonna come. And share that with everybody, but it gives them time to research, which I, I'm sure is really helpful. Also, w- we like that too, lawyers. Did Jeff go over open meetings law? Okay, so this is just a summary, it's there. Any questions about open meetings law? It's our last one, but, um, look, I don't even need to point over there, okay? Um, anything else on what I've, what we spoke about, quasi judicial, why it's important, kind of hypotheticals or things you could think of or any, anything? Yeah.
We looked at various ways about, um. Most of what the planning commission does that has quasi judicial hearings. Uh, there's a fair amount of depth and detail it's done, at least as much as the city council.
Right.
Um. Unless, unless some measures are taken to incorporate. Those findings, those discussions, those deliberations, it's not part of the record.
Correct, except the minutes.
Pardon?
Except the minutes.
Except the minute, if the minutes are done in time and if the minutes have been approved, so. There's a question, but.
Okay.
Um, it does, it does seem anomalous that everyone in the city knows exactly what the planning commission did if they bothered to go look at the tape, which is available. Is the city council not supposed to look at the tape, the planning commission?
I'm asked this all the time, it's better that. You, you look at the minutes, even if they're drafts, you, you see what the planning commission recommended. But that you make your decision based on the hearing in front of you. And I'm, I believe, I know I'm asking and everyone gets so frustrated, but we spent four hours, but it's, it's just to give two. Steps that process, the planning commission, you have special expertise and you're listening, and then you're making a recommendation based on that. The council should take that in consideration, obviously you're going to look at everything else that's in front of you. But they, they could read the minutes and they could read that decision, they really should, they're deciding on the hearing in front of them, not. That, so they really should not watch the planning commission, obviously I know it's there publicly, but.
Information from the planning commission can be brought to the council at the hearing, but so. If the minutes aren't there, then it's, if the minutes aren't there, then.
I think the minutes always are, right? And like, even if they're drafts, they should.
Their minute, their approved minutes are never.
Correct, because of the. Correct, the, the, to keep things moving in a timely manner. Um, because the development community doesn't want to wait for an additional planning commission meeting for approval of the minutes. Um, it is a draft of the planning commission minutes and they're clearly labeled draft that are included in the packet. That goes to city council, um, they also see that with other boards that do a, a Q J review. Um, like this evening, they're, um, hearing, uh, requests related to amending a historic designation. And they have a copy of the draft minutes from the H P C's review of that item.
So said another way, Lee, have you ever amended a mi- minutes for a hearing where you felt that was crucial to, you know, had the, had the council seen? That amendment, that, that would have changed their decision?
I would say that, I just a, a comment. I would say that hardly ever would any change to the minutes ever be substantive, that it would change the meaning and the intent. Of what's in the minutes, would you agree?
Um, I think sometimes more a case when minutes are reviewed, I think, and I think it's true, the planning commission don't know as much on the council. Whether it's the same way, but that. A lot of details may be omitted. So it's not so much, it's, it's very seldom has anyone's gone through and said. You know, well, we had a long discussion about this and these and this points are, the, the, the minutes tend to, would tend to abbreviate. And generally.
The thing we hear is.
No one could stand it if when the minutes are coming up, if, if, oh, well, Mr. Brown's got a list of ten, ten additional things that were in the, you know, meeting that were covered on it.
What we hear in the council meeting is, I wonder if the planning commission discussed that. You would have thought they had to discuss that and, and we did, but it never got communicated to the council.
But either Karen or myself will, but be, usually be in the council meeting to kind of clarify, um. But I wasn't a community just last week where they brought this, um, question, Lee, and they decided. Opposite what Karen said, cause you guys are being, you know, development friendly and you want, there's, you also have a, um, short. Um, building season in Colorado, um, but they decided, no, we wanna, we wanna have final minutes. And they, they were told that there was to delay everything by a month and they said, we don't care, we want to have final minutes. And this is just last week, um, so that could be a decision that council makes. I'm, I'm fine with the draft minutes being considered and things being moved along that you guys have decided to do that.
Well, and also know that, uh, when council's addressing it, we have staff here as well, but.
I was gonna say Karen does a good job of. So I'm okay with the draft.
Just so you know, I mean, that's just a thought that I have.
Because, and then another idea, another thing I always explain when I'm asked about, you know, can people watch the Zoom? It's like, there's only like that one person that watches, everyone's not going to watch, right? Because you are all volunteers, are you, are, is everyone going to watch that four hour hearing? So that's not really fair either, right? They're, um, they're, they're, they're making their decision on the hearing and that's in front of them. And if only some people watched the hearing, the planning commission hearing and some people don't, that's another way, it's, it's, it's really not the best. I, I, I will say it's not the most egregious, um, offense that someone can make, but if I'm going to be like, you know, hyper technical, I would like them just to consider what's in front of them. Which is, you know, your recommendation, your minutes, and then the hearing that's in front of them.
Lou Ramon is one of our board of adjustment members, he's got his hand up.
Oh, perfect, and then after, but is. You. Okay.
Lou, if you can hear me, you can, um, speak. Okay, I see him there.
Okay, sorry, I was, um, technically napped here. Um, yeah, what I was wondering is, is in a situation like that and, and. I guess we on the board of adjustment kind of have an advantage, cause our stuff usually doesn't go back to council.
Right.
But would it pay or make sense? For a member of the planning commission. To support and participate in the meeting. And if a question comes up like that, be able to. Represent what was discussed at the planning commission, recognizing that the, the. The board doesn't have a chance. Or an inclination, uh, to, to read all the minutes or view all the videos. I mean, it would seem like that's part of the process. Where the, the commission members, if you've got something from a board or commissioner panel. That's going to the city council, you ought to have a representative there that can state if it's questioned. Uh, a little bit more of the background detail, uh, you know, I know Karen can try to represent that, but.
I would like that not to be the case respectfully, Lou, because I think, um, the minutes, you know, the minutes speak to, and then also what your recommendation is. Um, if you guys want it ha- included in your recommendation, you know, findings and hope that that is included in the minutes, but. Um, for one person to represent what happened in a whole hearing versus what the council is really. It's, it's very important, the recommendation from the planning commission, but that's included in their consideration in addition to the hearing that's in front of them. We try to keep it, the two separate hearings.
In the past, when I served on the planning commission, um, in the last century, one of it's, um. If it was something that was very complicated with a lot of moving parts. After the planning commission, and I'm thinking specifically at the signage, uh, ordinance, I, I did attend the. Uh, city council meeting, just in case there were specific questions about how we came to a recommendation.
That was for the signage ordinance?
Yeah.
But that was a, that's a legislative, yeah.
Oh, that's true, you're right, I'm sorry. Well, and also note, it's not just Karen or the staff member that was in attendance, it's also the attorney.
Mm-hmm.
That will be here for that public hearing.
And Karen gives me like every month, um, the, the big things that are coming up, so like, I try to be like, okay, then I'll be at the planning commission for that meeting. I'll try to be the city council meeting for that meeting, that's kind of how we try to organize it. Um, something that's going to be contentious, interested to the community, cause that's where there'll be more questions. Okay, you're gonna go ahead.
So, so I was gonna suggest, in the interest of trying to strike some balance, I mean, we don't want the minutes to be a. Of, you know, a full dictation of a four hour meeting. Um, I, I would think perhaps it'd be appropriate if we knew something was like seriously debated, or maybe the, uh, commission was like. Very evenly split, or it really mattered us to, to just say, I would like the minutes to reflect, is that a, a fair way to do that?
If, if it's your, as it relates to your findings, I would find that appropriate during the deliberation part, yeah.
Or even maybe after the vote to make sure that the, that it was conveyed, that we voted this way because.
As.
Is that, is that appropriate?
I, it would, it would be more appropriate, it's part of the, either the motion or the deliberation, I'm looking at Karen just so I know it's, it's hard, but if it may be succinct and then. You are able to give findings, so you are able to approve findings, so if you have like, you know, four or five reasons that relate to the code. Um, and, and you, and you say, these are our findings and we want them to be included in the minutes, I think that's appropriate.
No, thanks.
The, the, the pro- the, the, where I find this question the most is not in, in, in that, um, scenario. It's like when that one person, it feels so strongly about this, you know, I'm like, wow, the, you know, the strength, like why they feel so strongly about this application. Um, and I'm just thinking of another community, this one person, and she always, she emails me every day about this issue. She wants to make sure that the council knows about her personal opinion about it and she's so vehement, that's where it's kind of like, well, this is the reason why it's not. But something like that, the findings, that's, that's different, you're, you're speaking truly objective, you want it to be included as an assistance, but. Um, even maybe why I hesitate is because when I'm asked this, it's because usually, a lot of times it's because someone feels so strongly about. A decision or I want to make sure they, they knew this and, and that kind of thing, so. But I try to keep the hearings clean, again, the record complete. And, and yeah, that's what we try to do here, or at least my role. But even the fact that everyone's asking all these questions is really good, this is a good group, um, just the fact, thinking about these things. I feel like we can never talk about the, these topics enough. Um, it's even good to articulate, cause you might have a sense of why it is, but then to articulate, but when it gets, does get to that heated. Hearing and, and people don't understand, it's like, no, this is for a fair process that you would want, if you had, if you're doing something to your property. Um, you would want to have that fair process. So e- even, I would say, you, you all have good instincts, I've worked with all of you a long time, um, and obviously some new, new councilors, but I've, I've worked with all. You have those good instincts, uh, um, maybe even the mo- the biggest, the second most important reason why these workshops are good. Is to how to articulate that to somebody who doesn't, um, who's very passionate about something and doesn't understand why you did things, things a certain way. You can kind of say, oh, well, I, you know, it's important for, for, for these reasons, this is what we've, this is, um, we're trying to have a fair process.
I had just one specific question, back on the chart, if you have an agenda.
Oh, yeah, your, your outline, oh, cause I wasn't working anymore.
I just wanted to ask about the placement of the item for public comment closed. Yeah, there's public comment is early on the menu.
Yeah.
And then, then there's, then there's staff comment, there's the applicant's comment, and then public comment closes.
Oh, it was more public, public hearing.
You want to have public comment come back again after applicants rebutted.
No, so, yeah, Sally asked me to include that, but I, I was public hearing, so that is, that's a typo, um.
So seven should come after four, I would think.
Yes, that public, public comment is closed, but then after council questions is where the public hearing. Um, the confines of the public hearing have closed, cause now you're deliberating, so that should probably say closed, yeah, either move up to five or close public hearing. Um, instead of public comment. That's a catch.
Anyone else have any questions? We have about five minutes left before we need to.
Yeah, they're taking pictures.
Needs to go picture here, but you make.
If you think of anything, um. I mean, you also have my email, but even if you don't, it's on the first page of this. And then, um, I'm sure, yes, Karen sent this to everybody, even like, like, so you could email me at any time. Um, it's even better to email to like, have a phone, phone call, that, cause especially if it's a hearing, I've, some of you I've spoken about, like, if there's a hearing that day. You could email me, I need to speak about this, and then this is when I'm free, and then I'll make sure to, to, um. To put that on top of my list, that I'm going to call you that day. Um, so, I mean, you also can call me anytime, but it's probably easier to email me and then I'll know to call you. And also know, like, to prioritize that that day, especially if a hearing's that day. Thank you, so, ask me questions at any time.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
So our photographer council is in the back. You have a few minutes to freshen up and then she'll escort you over to the park.
Excellent. So we don't get lost on the way.